Good evening, we'd like to call the Durham City Council meeting to order at 7:03 PM on Monday, May 16th, and certainly want to welcome all of you here with us this evening. If we just take a moment for solid meditation, please. I ask Councilman Davis to lead us in the pledge.
Mayor Bell, Mayor Pro Tem Col McFadden, Councilmember Davis, Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Moffett, Councilmember Reese, and Councilmember Shul.
We have four proclamations this evening. First speaks to National Public Works and asks the Director, Marvin Williams, if he'd join me, please. I had a dead deer in my neighborhood and I called the manager last night to say, "Who takes care of this?" He said, "Marvin Williams."
Did it get picked up?
We might have to take this proclamation back, let's say. It speaks to the fact that public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. Whereas support of understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public works systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection. Whereas health, safety, and comfort in this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. Whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials. Whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitudes and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I will be Mayor Bell, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim this week of May 15th through May 21st, 2016, as National Public Works Week in the City of Durham, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works, to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. With my hand, Corporal, City of Durham, North Carolina, this is the 16th day of May, 2016. I'd like to present this to Marvin for any comments you may have.
Thank you, Mayor Bell, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, members of council. On behalf of the staff of the Public Works Department, I'll thank you for this proclamation. As our conversation before, the mayor read the proclamation shows we do a lot of things that people normally don't think about, but they appreciate once it's done. So on behalf of the staff of the department, thank you for recognizing the work that we do. As always, I'll invite all of you, if you have the time on your schedule, to join us at Southern Boundaries Park on this Friday afternoon as we have our annual department get-together. So that we just basically have a big lunch together and talk to each other about things going on in the department and just really have a good time in the afternoon. So if your schedule allows, please feel free to join us.
This next proclamation speaks to the issue of national gun violence awareness day. And I would ask Kareem Haldeman, is Kareem here? Bring as many as you like. This is a proclamation that we in Durham are all too familiar with in terms of violence by guns. It speaks to the fact that whereas everyday 91 Americans are killed by gun violence and the lives of countless others are injured, whereas Americans are 25 times more likely to be murdered with guns than people in other developed countries. Whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is the mayor's highest responsibility. Whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from dangerous people. Whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, are the best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. Whereas on June 2nd, 2016, would have been the 19th birthday of Hadiya Pillinson, a teenager who marched in President Obama's Second Oval Parade, was tragically shot and killed just weeks later. Whereas to help honor Hadiya and the 91 Americans whose lives were cut short, and countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national correlation of organizations has designated June 2nd, 2016 as the Second Annual National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Whereas Hadiya was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is the color that symbolizes the value of human life. Whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 2nd to help raise awareness about gun violence. Whereas by wearing orange on June 2nd, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives and lost human potential of Americans stolen by gun violence. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore, I will be Mayor Bell, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim June 2nd, 2016 as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the City of Durham, and I call upon all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives, as we also declare that we as a country must do more to reduce gun violence. And with my hand, Corporal, City of Durham, North Carolina, this is the 16th day of May, 2016. And I'm going to present this, and I will just mention that I was invited to the White House next week on the subject of gun violence. And unfortunately, because we're doing budget hearings, I'm not going to be able to attend, but I can tell you the President takes this very seriously, and as do a lot of elected officials across this country, and hopefully the citizens of Durham and throughout the nation, in trying to find out how we might be able to make better sense of what's going on in this community, especially as it relates to gun violence.
Thank you, Mayor Bell. Thank you, Councilman Steve Shul, and the entire Durham City Council for this proclamation today. Not only is it important for keeping this issue in the forefront of our conversations here in Durham, particularly at a time when the problem appears to be growing. But also, as I stand here with family members who have had their own children stolen by gun violence in the City of Durham, I think the proclamation is also a call to action. And there are lots of ways we can all get involved, but it's time for our citizens to stand up and get involved and be part of the solution to the problem. I invite everybody here, everybody in Durham, to please wear orange on June 2nd. It's the color of gun violence prevention. It's a symbol of the vitality of life. And we invite you to wear orange that day. We'll have two buildings glowing orange that evening in Durham. We're lighting the skylines orange across the country. And Durham, we have the Carolina Theaters going orange, and the North Carolina Mutual Life Insurance Company will also glow orange that night. Finally, if you have time on June 2nd at 6 o'clock, we're hosting an event. I am a volunteer with Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America, and we are hosting an event that evening at 6 o'clock out on the lawn at Bull McCabes downtown. It is a celebration of life, so please bring your families. And we will be there on the lawn, not only to celebrate life, but also to provide information about how you can get involved. So thank you, thank you, Mayor Bell, for supporting us for a long time. For the city council for always being supportive of the safety of our citizens. And also for everybody here tonight, thank you for coming. Just being here makes a difference, so thank you very much.
Let me again say, I don't recognize the faces, I recognize the signs. We appreciate the fact that you have concerns, that you want to express them. You've done that. I would ask that you lower your signs, and please don't disrupt the council as we go through our business of the night. We understand the questions that you raise, we appreciate it, but we would ask you to respect the decorum of this council also. Thank you.
We have been out here with city workers for nearly two months. Every Monday outside of City Hall. And today, May 16th, the deadline was issued to City Council. To make a decision. And we are again demanding to cease all plans. And consider what real safety for our communities looks like. Outside of police. Beyond police. Do the right thing. Or we will continue. To show up. To defend our black and brown communities. And do whatever it takes. To prevent this new headquarters. We want a Durham beyond policing.
You're welcome. Have you finished? Have you finished? Thank you. Can you close the door, please? The next proclamation speaks to Internal Audit Week. It speaks to the fact that internal auditing is a vital part of strengthening organizations and protecting stakeholders of both the public and private sectors. Whereas internal auditing helps identify and manage the organization's risks and ensure policies, procedures, and controls are in place and working appropriately. Whereas internal auditing is an increasingly sophisticated and complex activity requiring specialized knowledge, training, and education. Whereas internal auditing is an established profession led by the Institute of Internal Auditors with a globally recognized code of ethics and international standards for professional practice of internal auditing. Whereas the contribution of internal auditors to the success of organizations and the global economy at large deserves our recognition and commendations. Now therefore, I will be Mayor Bell, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the week of May 16th, 2016 as Internal Audit Week in Durham, and commend its observants to all citizens, witnesses. My hand, Corporal, City of Durham, this is the 16th day of May, 2016. I'm going to present this.
Sonal Patel, Assistant Director of Audit Services. Mayor Bell, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of council. On behalf of the Director, Jermaine Bruington, and the audit staff, I'd like to thank you for recognizing this week as the Internal Audit Week. The Audit Services staff is committed to providing training opportunities for city employees in order to reinforce the ethical culture and values of the city. This week, we'll be hosting our Fraud Prevention Awareness Symposium in addition to other activities to engage city employees. We also have our Fraud Museum set up in the lobby, so if you have a chance, please take a look. Thank you.
I'm proud of all of our departments and city government, but I'm especially proud of the Internal Audit because that's one of the programs, when I became mayor, that I had a hand in strengthening, I hope. And it's done an excellent job, continues to do an excellent job in terms of the internal audit affairs of the City of Durham. Ms. Wanda Boone, will you join us on trial? Good evening. Bring anybody else? Is this it? Bring everybody you think needs to be here. Let your husband take all the pictures. In fact, I was just looking at an article on TV this evening about opiates, so very appropriate that we have this proclamation. Whereas substance abuse and mental health problems affect all communities nationwide. According to 2015 National Survey on Drug Use and Health, estimated 24.6 million Americans are current illicit drug users. Nearly one in four young people aged 12 to 20 report drinking alcohol in the past month. And one in four Americans aged 12 or older smoke cigarettes. Each day more US citizens die from drug overdoses and car crashes. Whereas in Durham, according to 2015 Duke Center for Child and Family Policy Durham County Substance Abuse Report, an estimated 19,000 citizens need substance abuse treatment. Whereas Durham Together for Resilient Youth, known as TRI, Bans Against Destructive Decisions, TRI's Youth Coalition, Coalition, College TRI, TRI's Campus Coalition, NCCU, community members and stakeholders from all walks of life work together to help prevent substance use problems before they start. Whereas the focus of the National Prevention Week each May is to increase public awareness of and action around substance abuse and mental health issues. This year's National Prevention Week theme is Strong as One, Stronger Together, recognizes the power each person has to influence the health and well-being of others. Whether by supporting someone who's going through a difficult time, participating in activities that strengthen the community, instilling health habits in children from an early age. Whereas the City of Durham recognizes the seriousness of the impact that substance abuse has on the health and well-being of our communities, and recognizes the power of prevention and the tireless efforts of those working to make a difference. Now therefore, I will be Mayor Bell, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim May 15th through May 21st, 2016 as National TRI, National Prevention Week. And Durham, and hereby call upon our communities to observe this week with TRI's compelling programs and events that support this year's theme, Strong as One, Stronger Together. With my hand, Corporal, City of Durham, this is the 16th day of May, 2016. I'm going to present this to Ms. Boone for any comments you may have.
Thank you very much, Mayor Bell, Mayor Pro Tem. I appreciate the support that you've given Together for Resilient Youth for all of these many years. We have a new landscape all over the country in terms of substance use and substance use prevention. Again, one of the most startling statistics has to do with the use of prescription drugs. And the fact that now more people die from overdose than car accidents in the United States. And so we have a real serious issue. One of the things we believe that prevention has to start with young people. And we always say that young people are our future, but not very often do we give them an opportunity to participate in their future. So we have some young people here today that are a part of the program that want to say a little bit to you about what Bans Against Destructive Decisions has meant to them. The other thing is, is that we take an environmental approach to substance use. And so even though we have programs, like many do, in terms of speaking to groups of young people, we really look at the built community to find out where the root causes of substance use begins and where it is. The last thing that I want to say has something to do with naloxone. Naloxone is a drug that when given to someone when they are in overdose and they are non-responsive, can bring them immediately right back. And one of the things that we are trying to do in Durham is to make sure that every middle school and high school has a naloxone kit. Because one of the things that we realize is difficult to talk about is that young people are using drugs within the school walls. They're doing everything that they can. But young people take medications from their parents' medicine cabinets and take them to school. So some of those hard conversations are those that we're having with young people and their parents and other adults that can make a difference. So thank you. And who's going to go first? Introduce yourself.
My name is Oscar Hernandez. I am the BAD leader at Early College High School here in Durham, North Carolina. This program has been a great opportunity for me, especially because I'm able to help prevent something big in our community such as substance abuse, underage drinking, and the use of prescription drugs. We encourage everyone to get involved with this program and this organization because it's a great way to help our community become a better community.
Hi, my name is Angie Mihia. I'm the cool leader at Early College High School here in Durham. BAD means a lot to me because it has brought many opportunities for me, as well as I have encouraged and changed the lives of my peers and other people in my community. I think this is a great program to be in for my age and other ages as well. And I encourage anybody to come, and I also want you guys to join us for our National Prevention Week as well.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ogetchi Anwebo, and I am the leader for BAD from Durham School of the Arts. And BAD has meant so much to me. Before I joined BAD, it felt like, I knew I had a voice, but it felt like no one could hear what I was saying. And ever since I joined BAD, I felt like I actually made a difference because I get different opportunities like this one, like I get to speak with you guys. And we recently got to go to Washington and speak with the assistant to G.K. Butterfield, and that was really something special because I spoke to him about things that were really important to me, and he seemed to listen and seemed to want to take actions towards what I was saying. So BAD has had lots of good influences on me.
Thank you, thank you.
Entertain any comments by members of the council at this time. Recognize Councilman Davis, Mayor Pro Tem, in that order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to mention, since Marvin Williams came up to the microphone just a few minutes ago, and this is National Public Works Week. I got a call from a constituent who wanted to share with me a concern about a public works issue in her yard. And I'll give a chance to talk to you, Mr. Williams, about that. But that was just a minor portion of the wonderful, almost two-hour conversation that I had with this 95-year-old woman who is the daughter of Reverend T.A. Grady. That name probably means a lot to lots of people. There is a T.A. Grady Recreation Center, and he was the pastor of several churches, including Western Baptist, Ebodisa Baptist, and a church in Chapel Hill. Mrs. Martha Dalton talked a lot about her parents, one of whom was T.A. Grady, and her mother. And they were in the first graduating class of what is now known as North Carolina Central University in 1911. So it was a wonderful conversation, and I hope that we'll get a chance to have her at some location sometime soon to be able to talk about the things that she remembers. Thanks a lot, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome. Recognize the Mayor Pro Tem.
I just wanted to thank Wanda and Earl, the wind beneath her wings. Stand up, Earl. They are helpers. They help each other with this wonderful thing. And thank you so much for bringing the young people with you. And Earl, you are indeed a positive role model for so many young black boys and men in this community, which we dearly need. We need it so desperately right now. And I wish that other young men would carve out time between the hours of 2:00 and 7:00 when young men are most vulnerable to crime, to do something to help prevent it. Thank you for all you do, and thank you, young people, for coming tonight. You're an inspiration.
Any other comments? If not, recognize the city manager for priority items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. No priority items.
Likewise, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No priority items.
And likewise, city clerk.
No items, Mr. Mayor.
We proceed with the agenda. First, we proceed with the consent agenda items. Consent agenda. If a member of the council, member of the public pulls an item for discussion, we discuss that later in the agenda. Otherwise, I'll just read the agenda item of each consent item on the program. Item 1 is work session start time, and I'll pull that item. We have persons that want to speak on that item. Item 2 is 2015 Durham City County Appearance Commission Annual Report. Item 3 is 2015 Durham Open Space and Trails Commission Annual Report. Item 4 is 2015 Durham Environmental Affairs Board Annual Report. Item 5 is 2015 Planning Commission Annual Report. Item 6 is 2015 Board of Adjustment Annual Report. Item 7 is 2015 Durham Historic Preservation Commission Annual Report. Item 8 is Construction Permanent Financing Loan Documents with Southside Revolization Phase II Limited Partnership for the Phase II Multifamily Construction at Southside East, known as the Lofts at Southside. Item 9 is the contract for professional engineering and groundwater monitoring services for closed sanitary landfill. Item 10 is the Williams Water Treatment Plant Terminal Reservoir Residuals Removal Contract, Construction Contract Award to Bionomic Services, Inc. Item 11 is Fleet Funding Capital Improvement Project, known as SIP Budget Amendment. Item 12 is the contract for Citywide Security Assessment and Strategic Plan between the City of Durham and Alert Associates Networking Divisions, Inc. Item 13 is acceptance of 2016 Parks Bill Community Grant from the National Recreation Park Association. Item 14 is contract for reimbursement of costs incurred for law enforcement assistance and accompanying grant project ordinance. And I'll pull out items. Someone wants to speak on that. Item 15 is the reimbursement agreement for the Whittaker School. Item 16 is an item that can be found on the general business agenda. Entertain a motion for the approval of consent agenda with exceptions to items 1 and items 14. It's been protested, move to second.
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Open. Open. Close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We move to the general business agenda. Item 16 is proposed FY 16, 17 budget and fiscal year 2017, 2022 capital improvement plan. Recognize the city manager.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Bell, Mayor Protem, Cole McFadden, members of the city council, city attorney Baker, city clerk, Ms. Gray, city staff, Durham residents that are present here tonight, as well as those who are viewing on Durham Television Network or possibly on social media. It continues to be my honor to be entrusted to lead this great organization and over 2,400 employees committed to public service to the community. I am pleased to be before you this evening to officially present the proposed budget for the city of Durham for the 2016, 2017 fiscal year. Each year, we choose a theme that not only reflects the budget priorities, but also ties into what's happening in the community. Over the last several years, but in particular the last 12 months, we've seen many people stepping up to make their voices heard on varied issues, whether by attending public meetings, social media posts, and yes, even protesting in the streets or in the city council chambers as we've seen this evening. And whether it's for a position that you support or not, making your voice heard is at the very heart of the democratic process and very much Durham. In my 60-year lifetime, taking your message to the streets or to the people has been responsible for moving our society forward in so many different ways. And yes, Steve Shul, I have even protested in a few of them. This year, many new initiatives will focus on taking our message, our services and programs to the people, engaging them where they are, in their neighborhoods, on mobile devices, social media, to enhance a more complete and transparent relationship with Durham city government. Some of you might remember the old Doobie Brothers song, "Taking It to the Streets", a commentary on social justice and protest with a lyric, "Take this message to my brother." That will be the city's goal over the next year, to take our city's services and message figuratively and literally to the streets. In the past decade, Durham has undergone a historic transformation. Each year has brought us closer to being a city of the future, providing all of the amenities, restaurants, housing, transportation, and entertainment that you'd expect from a large, growing, and thriving city. Yet in the midst of the excitement and prosperity, there are many issues that must continue to draw our attention and best problem-solving skills so that everyone in Durham can be a part of and benefit from the solutions. This year's budget envisions how your government can better engage you, the citizens of Durham, continuing current forms of outreach and using new ways to connect with residents where and when it's needed most, to make our city a great place to live, work, and play for everyone. Last year, the city's strategic plan, Durham's Got It, was refreshed and updated. The plan and its goals continue to be the foundation for our planning, driving our operational needs, and guiding the budget process. As in years past, we continue to take it to the streets to listen to residents as we develop the budget. And in the future, we'll enhance our feedback loop as we make the resident satisfaction survey an annual process. Again, thank you to the mayor and city council for your guidance and participation from the beginning of this process, and to the residents who made their voices heard along the way as well. While every voice was heard, not every request was met. But this budget continues to be a collaborative process that cannot be done well without the input of the council and of the public. In developing the budget, we reviewed overall resources, financial and human, to understand needs to sustain an innovative and high-performing organization, including the cost of services, adequate resources to provide them, including fair and reasonable tax rates, along with responsible debt ratios and reserve levels. This year, Durham County conducted a reevaluation of all real property. Durham is growing, and property values have increased, an overall increase of about 16% citywide since the last revaluation eight years ago. We also know that this evaluation of property and ultimate decisions about tax rates will impact property owners in dramatically different ways across the city. The proposed total budget for fiscal year 2016, 2017 is $403.7 million, a nearly 4% increase from last year. This represents the largest budget in the city's history and reflects a government that is growing to meet the service demands of a growing city. The proposed general fund budget, which covers the city's core services, is $180.9 million, a little more than a 5% increase over last year. Last year, thanks to a significant increase in new construction, we projected a 2% increase in new taxable values for the 2016 budget, meaning a penny on the tax rate was equal to about $2.475 million. You'll recall the tax rate did not change from that prior year. And while the reevaluation took that growth into account, remaining the tax-neutral rate of 54.41 cents in this year's budget would still not cover the expanding priorities, primarily in public safety, affordable housing, and capital improvement needs. I am proposing that the new tax rate of 56.07 cents per $100 of assessed valuation, which is a decrease of 3.05 cents from the current tax rate, but 1.66 cents above the revenue-neutral tax rate. This rate places the value of a penny at $2.75 million. What this means for the average homeowner in the city is a tax bill of about $1,005 per year on a house valued at about $180,000, which is the median house value in the city, according to the Durham County Office of Tax Administration. The proposed general fund expenditures include increases in operational operating costs and personnel operating costs to sustain current programs, as well as funds many new initiatives. Throughout the year, we continue to scrutinize programs and services and limit increases to what is needed to accommodate population and cost-growth factors and to support the strategic plan. The proposed budget uses $7 million of fund balance for a variety of one-time general fund costs, many of which I will discuss later in this presentation. The projected fund balance at the end of the current fiscal year is $47.4 million, which is approximately 28.4%. This is well above the budget guideline of 12% and helps safeguard against economic uncertainty and emergency conditions. The city continues to enjoy an outstanding credit rating by all rating agencies due in part to our sound fiscal management and fund balance. Ensuring that we reach as many residents as possible remains a high priority to help keep our residents informed and our services and decision-making to be as transparent as possible. While city council meetings are already video livestreamed and work sessions audio livestreamed, the budget includes technology upgrades to allow access to live video and audio streams of these meetings on mobile devices. Funding is also included in the budget for Durham One Call to implement what's called virtual hold technology, which will increase service during peak call times by allowing callers to leave a message and indicate the best time they'd like to receive a call back. Perhaps one of the most rewarding aspects of my job is when I hear from residents giving positive recognition to city employees. It happens frequently, and is something I happily share with those employees. Rewarding and retaining these employees in a highly competitive environment is high on our priority list. The proposed budget continues our pay-for-performance system, differentiating employees' compensation adjustments by levels of performance. Within the proposed pay plan, pay-for-performance plan, general and fire employees will receive an average 4% pay increase, while police employees will receive an average of 4.5% increase. In anticipation of the recommendations from the Police and Fire Pay Study, which we anticipate receiving later this summer, the proposed budget has dedicated $2.5 million to begin to address public safety pay issues and promotion and retention efforts. Employee wellness also remains a top priority in the organization. As healthcare costs and use continue to rise, some premium adjustments are necessary to maintain our self-insured $33 million fund that covers the lives of more than 5,300 employees and their dependents. The new Blue Local option will provide considerable premium savings for employees and their families. As in the past years, keeping our public safe and secure warrants the use of the greatest share of resources in personnel, as well as facilities and equipment. I'm pleased to announce that while we're still analyzing the results of the recent Police Staffing and Deployment Study by the International Association of Chiefs of Police, this budget includes funding for 20 additional police officers. New deployments and additional resources will enhance community policing practices. As a part of this enhanced effort, a community liaison officer will be dedicated to work in the blocks and census tract contained in the Poverty Reduction Initiative area in northeast-central Durham. Chief CJ Davis, who begins in just two weeks, understands these priorities and is prepared to transform policing by taking it to the streets in Durham. The proposed budget provides over $1.5 million to begin a three-year phase-in of a take-home car program to encourage police officers to become more visible and invested in the Durham neighborhoods in which they live. Partnerships also continue to be vital in our efforts to promote and maintain a safe community. Funding is included to support prosecutors and courts to focus on violent crime and gangs. Additionally, we will work to enhance the project build and Durham County Public Health Department Cure Violence Initiatives that we expect to be proposed in the county's budget to reach more at-risk youth. These initiatives use street outreach workers to work face-to-face with youth ages 12 to 22 to change their direction and their lives, and to explore a model used in other cities by working with former gang members to change the culture of violence in neighborhoods by detecting and interrupting potentially violent conflicts. Two new fire positions are funded to help businesses and homes meet Carolina fire codes in the budget. We're also including funding for a new Knox Box Key Security System on fire vehicles to provide a secure means of maintaining master keys for over 1,000 businesses within these boxes mounted on their buildings. In the coming year, it will be critical for the city to work closely with Durham County to assess collaboration opportunities to more effectively deliver fire and emergency medical services to a rapidly growing Durham. $3.4 million in funding is also included in the budget for the Transportation Department to maintain existing and provide additional street lighting in both residential and thoroughfare areas to help with this crime prevention efforts. We cannot overemphasize our belief that strong neighborhoods make strong communities. And I'd like to add that engaged neighborhoods make even stronger communities. That is why meeting you where you are drives our efforts in the coming year to build stronger neighborhoods. I'm excited to introduce something we're calling City Hall on the Go. Modeled after communities such as Boston and Dallas, it might look like a food truck, but the menu will showcase a variety of ways to involve, inform, support, and engage Durham residents with their local government, from requesting services, paying bills, finding out about meetings, applying for jobs, and many more. Director Constance Stancil and her team in our neighborhood improvement services department will work with all departments and with neighborhoods for regular visits by City Hall on the Go, once again, taking it to the streets. This budget also provides $37,000 in funding to encourage residents to embrace their neighborhood even more by providing competitive neighborhood mini-grants of up to $2,500 each to help build community pride, beautify a neighborhood, or even promote public safety. The development of an affordable housing strategy continues to be one of our highest priorities. On June 2nd, our Community Development Department, along with its consultant, Enterprise Community Partners, will present the long-awaited Affordable Housing Guidelines and Priorities in a special city council work session. While the proposed budget includes a continuation of the penny for housing valued at $2.75 million per year, all expectations are this will not be nearly enough to meet the community's needs and aspirations. Included in these unmet needs are critically important new partnerships with the Durham Housing Authority as it transitions to a new housing model for our communities most vulnerable, as well as the authority's transition to a new executive director and senior staff. The city council will have an opportunity to consider the needs and funding implications of the Affordable Housing Guidelines and initiatives on June 2nd, and if decide, if you decide, an increase in funding is warranted, it can be done prior to your budget adoption. The South Side community also continues to lead the way in the city's award-winning affordable housing efforts, with Phase Two construction of 85 more apartments at the South Side Lofts beginning in early June, with almost seven in 10 designated as affordable units. Mayor Bell has challenged us that 2016 is to be the year of action for the Poverty Reduction Initiative and Census Track 10.01, and this budget addresses many of the highest priority initiatives developed by the six task forces. First and foremost, a full-time staff person will be designated in our Neighborhood Improvement Services Department to support the mayor, the task forces, and their staff liaisons. Already mentioned in the public safety portion of this presentation, a dedicated police-community liaison officer and take-home residency, take-home car residency incentive with the highest priority for officers living in these areas. Funding is also provided to support the Finance Task Force Childhood Savings Account Program at Y.A. Smith Elementary and the Jobs Task Force for the identified need to provide legal aid support for residents whose prior justice involvement is a detriment to employment. Bus service improvements funded with the $7 motor vehicle fee will better manage overcrowded routes by increasing the frequency of service and fund new routes, as well as new badly-needed bus shelters. A visible sign of a vibrant city is the need to better manage parking. A dedicated resource to manage parking, including project management, technology, and maintenance, is funded within the budget. Key projects will include $2.5 million for design of a new downtown parking garage, $1.8 million to implement paid on-street parking later this fall, and $500,000 for security improvements in downtown parking decks. And thanks to Mayor Bell and Parade Committee led by Mayor Protem, Cole McFadden, no more is Durham without a holiday parade. Funding of $45,400 is included to heat a call made by many, "Bring Back the Annual Holiday Parade." No applause? If you're in Durham for any length of time, you'll quickly learn that our community has no shortage of accolades when it comes to our economy. Last year, Wallet Hub recognized Durham as number 19 among the most recession-recovered United States cities. The Milken Institute ranked the Durham Chapel Hill, M.S.A., among the top 25 best-performing cities for how well we create and sustain jobs for our economic growth. And Smart Asset named Durham among the top 10 counties that bring the most investments. In my opinion, these accolades, which are just a few of the many that come our way, say quite a lot about Durham. As our city continues to rapidly grow and become home to new businesses and residents, we must be able to better manage the development review process, which has been a high priority in the Joint City-City Economic Development Plan that was adopted this year. User-fee funding to support a new development services center with five new staff positions is included in this budget. The center will create a business-friendly environment that will provide time-sensitive and easy-to-navigate development review process. Culture, arts, and festivals are also a vital part of Durham's economic fabric. Support is included for continuing delivery, vibrancy of arts and entertainment facilities such as DPAC, DBAP, Carolina Theater, Haytides Heritage Center, and the Durham Arts Council. And while the budget also contains $250,000 to adequately support major festivals such as Full Frame, American Dance, Art of Cool, Bull Durham Blues, Bimbe, and Mog Fest, this coming year, we will initiate a complete review of all allocations to each of the festivals to improve fairness and transparency and consistency. of the festivals to improve fairness and transparency and consistency. To ensure the needs of unemployed and underemployed residents, that they are more efficiently met, the North Carolina Works Career Center sites at Briggs Avenue and Northgate Mall will be consolidated and relocated to the former Lakewood Shopping Center. This relocation will help revitalize this neighborhood in a transformative way and provide residents a more accessible location to meet their job-search needs. One-hundred thousand dollars continues to be provided in support of Made in Durham is included in the budget to continue providing education and training to prepare our youth for jobs. Support for the Durham Youth Work Internship Programs is also included. Of course, this is a partnership between the city, county, Durham Public Schools, for-profit businesses, and nonprofit agencies to hire our youth for job-training opportunities. And while signs of the growing economy abound, we know that many in Durham are not benefiting from this prosperity. Communities across the country are recognizing the need to include financial empowerment as a part of their economic development strategy. Durham was recently selected by the National League of Cities as one of eight from across the country to participate in a year-long collaborative learning exchange to expand financial inclusion programs and economic development strategies. While Durham is fortunate to have several nonprofits working on this issue, this year I will be tasking the Office of Economic and Workforce Development to assign an existing position to focus on expanding financial empowerment and inclusion programs in Durham. At the same time, we know that many of our residents encounter challenges re-entering the community from the criminal justice system. This not only negatively impacts their lives and the lives of their families, but also our community in many other ways. County Manager Wendell Davis and I have had several discussions on this important topic and have committed to double our collective efforts to better understand and coordinate the various re-entry programs supported by both of our organizations. In addition to providing programs and services and addressing human needs that directly affect residents, taking care of the city buildings, parks, roads, and infrastructure is also crucial. The city has made significant strides to commit funds over the past few years to address longstanding deficiencies. And while we've come a long way over the past years, the condition of city streets continues to be a top concern for residents, according to the most recent survey. Here's where we quite literally are taking it to the streets. Funding for street and sidewalk repair and resurfacing will be increased to three million dollars in the budget, which is a million-dollar increase from last year's budget. Two public works positions have been re-classed to engineering inspectors to support the growing demand for issuing permits and inspections of private utility installation, which will identify infrastructure damage and hold utility providers accountable. Funding is also included in the budget in the Deferred Maintenance Fund to seven-hundred-thousand dollars, which is one-hundred thousand dollars more than last year's budget. We've heard loud and clear that street trees are important and contribute not just to the beautiful aesthetics of Durham, but to our environmental quality. To better understand the condition of this important community asset, forty-five thousand dollars is included to conduct a targeted street tree inventory. This assessment will establish how many, as well as the condition and risk of our willow oak trees on public property in the study area. Funding is also included to add a third tree crew to our General Services Department to address the growing backlog of trimming and removal service orders. Also included is funding for one new construction project manager who will oversee park and trail projects that are funded through the dedicated half-cent funding for park maintenance. And also planned is an inventory and assessment of stormwater infrastructure located in our parks, cemeteries, and trails. Public water systems across the country are under significant scrutiny as the nation sees what can happen when this critical environmental resource is not protected, not properly invested in, and not managed. Fortunately for Durham, forward-thinking and strong political support over the last ten years has seen three-hundred-and-seventy-seven million dollars invested in the city's water and sanitary sewer system. Major capital and projects to improve water delivery systems continue, as evidenced by the downtown Loop Water Main Replacement Project that should be wrapping up later this year. As you will note on this slide, in order to meet growing demand on water resources while continuing to update an aging system, moderate water and sewer rate increases are included in the budget and have already been approved by the City Council. The capital improvement budget includes one-hundred-and-seventy-three-point-nine million dollars for new and existing projects. Funding is provided through water and sewer revenues, revenue bonds, general fund financings, pay-as-you-go funding, parking, and stormwater fees. Nine-point-nine million dollars in general fund capital projects is proposed for projects that were deemed a priority and essential to the city's capital infrastructure needs. The remaining one-hundred-and-sixty-four million dollars of the CIP funding is dedicated to water and sewer, stormwater, and other enterprise projects. At this point, we've done our best thinking to recommend a budget that continues to move the city of Durham forward. It has been a collaborative process relying on the groundwork of long-term financial planning, strategic planning developed over the last few years, and at the same time, always trying to predict what the future holds. It is now time for the elected leadership and the residents to review and scrutinize this proposed budget. We remain committed to transparency in our budget as well as our total operations. Copies of the proposed budget are now available on our website, in the City Clerk's Office, and in the Budget and Management Services Department. And residents are invited to share their thoughts at a public hearing on the budget on Monday, June 6th. I also want to encourage our residents to stay engaged with us on any of the social media platforms listed here. We are hitting the streets, coming to you both literally and figuratively, and we encourage you to meet us halfway and meet us often. As always, special recognition to Bertha Johnson and her Budget and Management Services team with our department directors for their leadership to assure that our strategic plan guides and aligns with budget priorities. I continue to appreciate and value the close-working relationship between the city administration and all members of the City Council as we think about what means the most to us as a community now and for generations to come. As I stated at the beginning of this presentation, many of our new initiatives focus on taking our message, services, and programs as much as possible to the people of Durham, providing easier access and meeting residents where they are. That's our guiding principle, whether it's in their neighborhoods, on their mobile devices, social media, or whatever. I believe this budget does indeed reflect how city employees are taking it to the streets, and I invite everyone to meet us there and to work with us to make Durham a place where great things continue to happen. Thank you.
Tom, that was great. It certainly sets the framework for us to begin our work sessions on the budget, and as you said, we hope that the public stays tuned, is available to listen, and at the public hearing on June 6th, be available to make comments or suggestions.
Thank you.
Just, Ms. Victoria Peterson.
Yes, your honor.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes, sir.
Let me conduct the meetings, please. I was just trying to comment on the manager's presentation, and I was waiting for the music to stop because we enjoyed the music. And now he's back, and now I'm going to move on to the next item. And the next item is on the budget, and we have three people that have signed up to speak, Ms. Peterson being one of them. And you and I have three minutes to speak on this item, Ms. Peterson, followed by Stephen Hopkins and Larissa Sible.
Yes, first thing I would just like to share with the public, we have citizens now, and I'm one of them, and I have asked in the past, we have citizens that have hearing disabilities as well as visual disabilities. We need to get the equipment down here. I spoke to the city manager about it a few weeks ago, and I thought he said he was going to try to do something, but nothing has been done yet. We have too much money in this community. Actually, it's a violation of the Americans with Disability Act that we do not have the kind of equipment to help those who are visually impaired, as well as those who have hearing problems, to sit and watch and listen. So that's one of the first things I think that the budget really needs to address. The second thing, I did not see anything in here, did not hear the city manager mention anything about the police station. This is something that I would like to have all the citizens in Durham. We had another murder, another young kid that was shot over into Durham Public Housing. I want to, Saturday, Mr. Mayor, Saturday, I don't know if you were told about it. The body, the young man, lay down there for a long time. Matter of fact, I have the pictures. I mean, it's very upsetting to see that and to see that constantly going on. So this is what I would like to ask the Durham residents and the Durham citizens. We need a stipend program for young men and women who are getting in trouble with the law to help them get out of that trouble. They would sign a contract with the citizens of this community, and in that contract, they would agree to go back to school. We will create, we would create an education program. They would go to school half a day. We would help them get employment. They have to stay out of trouble, and each month, they would get a stipend ranging anywhere from two thousand to three thousand dollars a month. One of the main reasons why a lot of our young people are in trouble, and I will continue to talk a little bit more about this, Mr. Mayor, in the future. One of the reasons why a lot of our young people are in trouble in this community, and they cannot get jobs, because once you get a criminal record in Durham or anywhere in North Carolina, that's a black mark against you. Many of our young people, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, matter of fact, Durham, Mr. Mayor, the police chief should have told you, last year, we had over six-hundred kids that were arrested or either petitioned to the juvenile system in this city, and that is growing. To have over six-hundred of our young people from the age of nine, Mr. Bondfield, to the age of seventeen, I have that information, caught up in the criminal justice system. We need a stipend program in this community, Mr. Mayor. And you and I, we can talk a little bit more about it, but we've got to do something to get this shooting and killing out of this community and put our young men, our young men and women, job-training, a stipend, to get them off these streets and stop them from killing and shooting one another. It is just overbearish.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We'll talk later. Thank you. Stephen Hopkins.
Steve Hopkins, six-one-seven, Mmosa, two-seven-seven, oh-three, PAC One co-facilitator. And I'm here in support of two of your task forces, Mr. Mayor, the housing task force and the jobs task force. PAC One has voted on what was being proposed with the jobs task force, and we do support it. Next Saturday, we have an PAC meeting, and we will be discussing the proposal from the jobs committee. I've looked at what the educational committee has done. I have problems with it, and I'm pretty sure PAC One will after we meet next week. So we need to talk about what that committee is doing for that census tract. But, Mr. Manager, interesting budget, interesting budget. Thank you for recognizing the needs in the neighborhoods and putting that grant there. You know, it's going to be rough competing with the whole city, but District One looks forward to it, and thank you again for that. Thank you again for looking at the affordable housing stuff. It's going to be interesting with the sidewalks because I'm trying to put together a tour for Hardy Street, the walking tour, so that you can see what our kids on Hardy Street have to go through between three and four o'clock in the evening, when they're trying to, you know, when the buses are bringing them in and all the cars running up and down. No sidewalks on both sides of the street. So, thank you.
Steve, Larissa Sible.
Thank you. I'm going to speak very briefly on two items in the budget. Thank you for proposing to raise the penny for housing. I hope you raise it to two cents for housing. Thank you. We really need it, not just because of the Affordable Housing Plan called for two pennies on the tax rate approximately to accomplish what we need to do in order to provide affordable housing, but also in the mayor's Poverty Reduction Initiative. I serve on the Housing Committee with Mayor Pro Tem Cora Cole MacFadden and Councilmember Eddie Davis leading us, and I'm also following Lenora Smith with Peach and her proposal to prevent lead exposure of children. And at the last minute, we were able to get some statistics from the state at the request of the mayor as to why do we need to address lead poisoning prevention in the Poverty Reduction Initiative area, and it became clear from the numbers, and we're still gathering them, but it became clear that in Census Tract 10.01, a child is five times more likely to be exposed to lead at a level that causes brain damage, learning disabilities, and possible dropout and criminal behavior later on in life. It was dramatic. I was not expecting it to be that large a difference. We knew that there were lead hazards in the homes because they are old, and people have not had the funds to keep them up if they own them, and we have some others that are rented where the tenants don't have much control over the conditions of the housing. But we do need to address that along with our other affordable housing needs so that our children are growing up in safe, healthy homes. One statistic that I also was surprised by in a webinar on Flint, Michigan, and talking about lead at very low levels can cause these learning problems in school, and they did a study looking back at the state of Rhode Island, which actually requires lead-safe certificates every time a house is rented. And due to that, the achievement gap has been closing, and more than fifty percent of the closing of the achievement gap in school, they could directly attribute to the lead-safe home environment that prevented that lead exposure, that allowed the children to thrive in school. So it's so important. I wanted to come and give you those statistics, and thank you so much for your ongoing support.
Thank you. Jackie Waxstaff and Anita Keith Faust. Is anyone else that wants to speak on this item? This is a general business agenda item, not a public hearing. All right, Mrs. Faust will be the last person.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Mayor Pro Tem, City Council members. I wasn't going to speak on this item, I was going to wait till the public hearing, but something just came over me sitting there when I was looking at the budget being proposed. And there's a lot of things in there that are a little problematic because when we're talking about lead, nineteen ninety-seven, you know, we were doing this Lead Peach Project and all of the gentrification that's going on in the neighborhoods. I would think that we've eradicated lead in these houses because none of us are living in them anymore. We've gentrified up the community. There is a lot of things in that budget that probably need to be, I hope that the public comes out when we have the public hearing, but one of the things that I hope that you reconsider is that new police headquarters. That eighty-nine is eighty-nine million-plus dollars that you are proposing to spend could be really spent on something different, like Ms. Victoria Peterson said, with a young man laying in the street dead for hours, kids running around looking at it. Think about the trauma that's going on with those kids now. Is anybody going to send any social workers in, any counselors in to talk to those kids? And then they're going to go into the public school after watching a body lay in the yard all day, practically all day, and they're going to have to function like normal kids or get sent to ISS when they don't function like normal kids. So there's a lot of things that needs to be done right now that I feel like this budget needs, there's some reconsideration. I haven't looked at the whole budget, and that's something, I'm good at looking at those budgets because I did sit up there and go through some budget a couple of years. And I just wanted to say, really look at that new jail or new police headquarters because every time I drive by Chapel Hill Street and look at the one sitting there, and then I heard, I think it was the manager or maybe the interim police chief, say that that building was in such bad shape, it couldn't be repaired. they don't function like normal kids. So, there's a lot of things that needs to be done right now, that I feel like this budget need, there's some reconsideration. I haven't looked at the whole budget, and that's something, I'm good at looking at those budgets, because I did sit up there and go through some budget a couple of years. And I just wanted to say, really look at that new jail, or new police headquarters, because every time I drive by Chapel Hill Street and look at the one sitting there, and then I heard, I think it was the manager, or maybe the interim police chief, say that that building was in such bad shape, it couldn't be repaired. It was too dangerous to be repaired. That's interesting to me, that you have people in a building, that you're saying, if you repair it, it's gonna be too dangerous to repair it, but they're still in it now. That kind of perplexes me. So, I think that that money, that two cent on those housing, I'm hoping, Mr. Mayor, that you don't get that money that you want to use to buy those condos down there, to make them affordable. I think you proposed that, to use that two cent, some of that money, to buy some of these newer condos, and place some affordable housing in it. I think you mentioned that back a couple of council meetings ago. But I'm hoping that doesn't happen, because there are better ways. Tiny House Village, maybe we need to start those in Durham. We have a lot of homeless people, and Tiny House Villages would actually accommodate those homeless people. We could take that $2 million, find some of that land that the city owned, that have taken back from foreclosures, put some tiny houses out there, monitor that. Might work. But I'll be back for the budget hearing.
Thank you, Jackie. Do come back. And I don't know where the two cents came from. We have one cents. Well, I'm just saying, I don't know where the two cents came from. And I can speak to you after the meeting, if you want to, okay? And no, we aren't using money to buy condominiums. Recognize Anita Keith Faust.
Hi, I'm Anita Keith Faust, and I want to do ditto on everything everybody said, including Victoria, talking about having something for the folks who are visually impaired, and hearing impaired, disabled. Also, I agree about the Tiny House Nation. I think it's a great idea. I called a banker to find out if a person is making minimum wage, how much home can they afford. He told me, maybe $10,000. So I know that the South SAP project is way out of the person who makes minimum wages' budget. So when you talk about affordable housing, I'm thinking about minimum wage, you know? I'm not talking about people who make $35,000, $40,000. Minimum wage, that's the affordable housing that I would like you to focus in on, because if you focus in on that, the rest, I'm gonna be taken care of, too. I didn't hear anything about providing money to fix the sidewalks, parks, and streets where water is collecting. And as we all know about this Zika virus getting ready to come out, mosquitoes, mosquito season is coming. I don't know if anything is in the budget. I know you're talking to Wendell Davis, Mr. Manager. And of course, the Health Department is under his, his operation. I have raised this up with the County Commissioners about being prepared for the Zika virus, but the sidewalks in the city, and the streets, and all that, where I live, there's about three different places that I can think of where water collects. That's at the North Durham Park. If you go to the Bay Street Park, there's an intersection off of Trinity, water collects there. And of course, down on the corner of Gregson Street and Trinity Avenue, it floods out there a lot. And there's a creek over there by the Old Y. So anyway, I'm hoping that there'll be something in the budget to deal with those issues about that water standing. Also, I'm one of those who cannot see well. I don't remember the name of the bus. What's the name of the bus? The Bull City, where you ride, the Bull City Connector? We have witnessed, in riding around, where sometimes, certain people are not picked up by the Bull City Connector. And if my tax dollars are going in, I think that's wrong. We need to do something about that. Also, we talked about, we're gonna take it to the street. I've been up here a lot, talking about the kids, talking about how we can prevent crime, about how you had a lawsuit back in the 1930s against the city of Durham. And the justification that the city of Durham had was that, you know, we need the parks to prevent gang activities. This is way back in the 30s. If we had enough sense for that back then, you know, why are we closing Old North Durham Park, for instance, every summer, to accommodate Central Park School for Children? When they go out for the summer, they close the park down. The other kids don't get to go and play in the park. When they come back, they open the park up. I think there's something wrong with that. My tax dollars are going in that. I think that needs to be addressed, if you're gonna prevent crime. All right, I'll be back.
Okay, that represents all the persons that signed up to speak on this general business agenda item on the public. We're now gonna move back to, well, I guess it would be appropriate to accept the manager's budget presentation, entertaining motion on that.
I move to accept the manager's budget presentation.
Do I need to get in this mic? I move that we receive and accept the manager's budget presentation.
It's been properly moved and seconded, and further discussion, hearing, and call, recognize Councilman Shul.
I just want to say how much I appreciate, the mayor's already said it, but I wanted just to add to that, Mr. Manager, it was an excellent, not only presentation, but it's, you know, we still have some things to discuss about the budget, and I know that we all have some different opinions on how it ought to shake out a little bit, but you've given us a tremendous start here. And there's so many new initiatives. It's the first time since I've been on council, we've been able to do this many new things. And I think that speaks really well to the financial management of the city, as well as our economic health as a community. So, just want to thank you for that.
Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote?
Pass the 7 is zero.
Okay, we'll move back to the concern agenda items that were pulled. Why don't we go with item one, which was the work session change date. And I recognize, well, yeah, I'm pulling, I'm going with one first, since that was the first pull. Let me say before I call the speakers, we had discussions on this proposed change at our work session. And at that particular time, it was decided to put this item on the consent agenda. At that particular time, there were five council members that were in favor of keeping the work session at the times that we had, and two that had other recommendations. We could have voted on that item at that time. In fact, the person who has been calling for this, was sort of demanding that we vote at that date. But respecting Councilwoman Reese's request, we decided to put this on the agenda, so the action will be taken at this evening meeting. But it is a consent agenda item, it's been pulled, and I'm going to call the persons who have signed up to speak on this item. Judith Montenegro, is she here? Let me, I'll call your name, Allison Swan, Amin Latif, Amin Latif here, Jackie Wagstaff, Anita Keith Faust, and Victoria Peterson. Now, is anyone else that did not pull this item as a part of consent agenda that would like to speak? If not, Ms. Peterson will be the last person to speak on this item. Ms. Montenegro?
Hello, good evening. Unfortunately, none of El Centro Hispano staff could be here today, because we're currently moving. Our building is being turned into this police headquarters. In any case, my name is Judith Montenegro, and I'm a board member of El Centro Hispano. I'm also a community organizer around Latino health issues in the southeast. I believe people have a right to health, and those rights are founded on the accessibility, the acceptability, and the availability of healthcare. I strongly believe that those same founding rights are also the foundations for effective democracy. At El Centro Hispano, we work to strengthen the community, build bridges, and serve as advocates for equity and inclusion of Latinos and Hispanics in the triangle. However, in order to effectively accomplish these goals, to the full extent, we need democracy to be accessible, available, and acceptable. Access to information is a crucial element to increase accountability and deepen trust among citizens and their governments. Participation in these spaces not only allows individuals to better understand the role of government, but also become knowledgeable of the decisions being made on their behalf, and hold our representatives accountable. As Durham's population continues to grow, and we become more diverse, it is imperative that we work together to make sure that our communities are not only included in the decisions, but also that our voices are heard. I respectfully ask today, that the city council meetings become more accessible to the Latino community, and to the broader community at large, by moving sessions to 6:00 PM, so working individuals can come, listen, learn, and share issues that affect their lives and communities with their representatives. Thank you.
Allison Swan.
Good evening. My name's Allison Swaim, and I teach in Durham Public Schools. I see firsthand what's happening in our community, because my students bring it into the classroom every day. And I can tell you that I and my colleagues want to be involved in our city's government, in the decision-making processes. But I teach at 1:00 PM, and I can't be at working meetings at that time, but I could be at a 6:00 PM meeting. So I really would ask you to reconsider, and perhaps change some of those meeting times. Thank you.
Amin Latif.
Good evening. I'm here to read a statement prepared by Robert Stephens. "It's with a heavy heart that I am not before you tonight. Work and other obligations have pulled me away from our city. Nevertheless, tonight you have an opportunity to listen to the citizens of Durham, the people who have elected you, and make a decision that positively improves the lives of its citizens. We can all agree, our city is better when it works for everyone. Working for everyone can look a variety of different ways. One way, for sure, is to hold our city council work sessions, at a time the vast majority of citizens can attend. City Manager Tom Bondfield is on record stating, his administration is available to work the 6:00 PM meeting. The Term Committee on the Affairs of Black People unanimously passed a resolution supporting the change. State Senator Floyd McKissick has also expressed support, along with County Commissioner Michael Page. The People's Alliance sent an email expressing their support for changing the time to 6:00 PM. El Centro has also expressed their support. This is a broad coalition of community organizations and citizens who are asking to be let in. We want to be able to attend a work session, and not have to decide between putting food on the table, and advocating for things we hold true. The greatest part of our society is our democracy. Democracy means we have a say, for better or for worse, in how our government operates. We are asking for you to honor democracy tonight. Honor the citizens who want to attend but are teaching. Honor the doctors who want to voice their concerns but are saving lives. Honor the people of Durham who work hourly jobs and cannot afford to take off work. They deserve to have a seat at the table when positions are discussed, when staff make presentations, and our elected officials take stances. Our city is comprised of numerous ethnicities, socioeconomic classes, and various interests. In spite of all our differences, we have one thing in common: Durham is home. We are asking to help us make our home a more equitable place. You have the power. Your vote tonight will send a message. In spite of hatred and demagoguery that exists in other parts of our state, we hold true to the notion that we are better together when we are apart, than we are apart. Help keep us together, and vote to change one work session time from 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Thank you."
You're welcome. Jackie Wagstaff.
Councilmembers, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, I stand before you again. First of all, I'd like to respectfully disagree with you about your assessment of Mr. Stevens demanding. I don't think he's demanding. I think as a taxpaying citizen of Durham, I think he's asking what normally everybody else does. When they have a passion about something, they come before city council, and they ask to have things changed. So I think he's just a passionate young man. I don't think he's demanding. But, you know, that's your assessment. But I would like to say that some years ago, we had the discussion, when I sat up there with 13 other members, we had this discussion about these times that would be accessible for the public to come before us. Now, we're not asking you to take both work session times, and allot them to 6:00 o'clock. We're just saying, try one of them. You have two of them a month. We're asking for one of those work sessions to be designated at 6:00, to allow those teachers, those people that can't come in here, come to City Hall at 1:00, and be present, and be a part of that democratic process. And right now, you know, we have, we know what your feeling is on this, and I'd like to thank Councilwoman Johnson, Councilman Reese, for supporting this. Now, I'm hoping after tonight, Mr. Mayor, now that you see there are other people that are interested in this matter, unlike what we heard when we came to the work session, that you will reconsider this. And Mr. Moffett, I understood that you were advocating for the firemen, and the housekeepers at Duke, and whatnot, and all of the different people. And now I'm seeing teachers in here saying, we work, and we would like to come, but we can't, they can't leave the students. Also, most of those people you mentioned at the work session, they have unions, they have people that will come and represent them. The people that I stand before you and represent, these are poor people, work at McDonald's, work at Wendy's. They can't leave those jobs. They can't afford to. So, we're just asking you to reconsider this. And look at the possibility of just collating this for about a year, to see if it will work. See if the traffic would pick up at 6:00, since you say nobody comes at 1:00, they can't come. So, we're asking you to reconsider what you talked about last week, a week and a half ago. Thank you.
Anita Keith Faust.
I'm not very good at putting things delicately. I'm Anita Keith Faust. So I'm trying. I was at that meeting Thursday, I think it was May 5, and I was really surprised to hear that this was the first time that certain members of city council had heard that people had an issue with the 1:00. And what Jackie's passing out, the media already has, is an email from me, June 11, 2004, regarding a work session meeting that took place on June 10, 2004. And I made it pretty clear that there were concerns about our voices not being heard. And I took the time to write up what took place at the work session, because actually, what happened, happened before the work session. Comments were made, directives were given, and it wasn't being captured by the city clerk, because it wasn't time for the meeting. So I took it upon myself to document it, and ask for it to be added to the official public record. Anybody who wants a copy, just let me know, I'll make one. We got a few more available. And so I just want to make it clear, and have it on the record tonight, that this was a poor problem before 2004, but I wrote it up in 2004. I know some of you are new to city council. Also, I was really concerned about having to say how many meetings you had, you had attended. So I don't know how many meetings I've attended, but I came so much that the workers said, I need to get a job here. So I came a lot. I don't think that's a requirement. But please, y'all, you see the people need to come. I can come and worry you to death at 1:00. I got it like that. But some people have to go to work. I can come and represent them, but I think they would rather represent themselves, and come up here at 6:00. So at least one meeting, like Jackie was saying, you know, give it a trial. And I was really surprised that the two people that we think are gonna run for mayor, Cora Coleman-Fadn and Steve Shul, voted against this. And so we need to take that into consideration, as we get ready for the next mayoral election. And thank you, Ms. Johnson and Mr. Reese, for supporting the people. Thank you.
Recognize, thank you, Ms. Faust. Victoria Peterson.
I think that's one of the problems here in Durham. I think we've had people that have been on this council too long. And we need some new folks, with some new vision, and some new ideas. And I'm glad that Ms. Johnson and Mr. Reese has brought this up. This community, our government, needs to try to change towards the people. We do need to have those meetings in the evening, to have more citizens' participation. And I agree with everything that Jackie and other folks are saying, but I think they just need to change it and leave it at 6:00, both of those meetings, instead of just doing one. They both need to be at 6:00. You also need to make sure that you have your visual and your hearing impaired equipment, so that we who have difficulties in those areas now can hear as well as see. I also have a problem about having a meeting upstairs. I think that's too small. It needs to be brought down here, and it needs to be televised. I do not understand why the work session really is not televised, at least as far as do not understand why the work session really is not televised, at least as far as I know. They say you can hear it. It's auto. It's tape, but it needs to be televised just like this. Also, I think we also need to try to bring in some, to address the time. And I've mentioned this to the new city council. And Mr. Baker, can you please do me a big favor and give the new city council members the policy on the meetings? How long the public is allowed to speak? Because as far as I know, when I looked at that several years ago, the public could speak up to five minutes. Somehow, it got moved down to three minutes. It is at the discretion of the whole city council to vote if the public can speak five minutes, four minutes, three minutes, or no minutes. It is not, it is not up to just one person. So Mr. Baker, our city attorney, policy person, could you please get us a copy of that and have a discussion, and please give it to the city council members, the new members, so that they can go over it and look at it? Because I don't want anybody up here to say that I'm lying or that I'm saying something wrong. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. You directed your question to the city manager, I mean, to the city attorney, about the procedures. Each one of the council members has a copy of the procedures, and I could read to you what it says, but specifically, the five minutes is up to the mayor unless the council chooses to do something different. Well, let me finish, okay? And so unless the council says you want somebody to speak more than three minutes, they can do that. But it's up to the mayor to do that, and it's based on allocation of time in terms of running the meetings. So any time that someone on this council, this council wants someone to speak more than three minutes, they can say that, and it happens. But we try to run efficient meetings, but still by the same token, allowing people to have an opportunity to speak. And so that's the way the meetings are run, and that's what the procedures require or account for. And it's many times that people go over three minutes. I'm not going to call names, but, you know, we allow that to happen. But anyway, we back to the item that was on the consent agenda. And I guess I'm going to make my remarks again. And what I've said is that this council is very open. People have an opportunity to speak on issues. I think people are under a different impression about what the work session is designed for. The work session is really for the council and administration to prepare the agenda. The action takes place tonight, just like I indicated, that we could have acted on this question about moving the work sessions at the work session, but we didn't. We're doing it tonight where people have an opportunity to speak. This is when, this is when, this is when action takes place. It doesn't take place, action doesn't take place at the work session. We discuss issues. There's a time for people to speak if they have issues they want to bring before us, but it's nothing that says you have to have the public involved. The work session is designed specifically for the administration and the council to work together on a agenda that's going to be presented at our Monday nights, where the public has an opportunity to come and it's appropriate time to speak, and the city council takes action. I said during this recent campaign, which I was campaigning, that I never heard anyone speak about changing the work sessions. I definitely didn't hear it from any of the candidates who were running. And let me say this, and I can't say what you said individually. You might have said a lot of things individually to people. I'm talking about the forums that we held for campaigns. No one raised a question about raising the work, changing the work sessions. And in fact, what I did is I went back and looked at one of the questionnaires about independent, an independent asked a bunch of questions. Let me finish, please, and this is me. I'm speaking on the public. I'm speaking on the public, okay? I'm not speaking for you to go back and forth. I'm speaking as the mayor of the city on this council. No one, none of those questions in here has asked anything about changing the work sessions. In fact, they asked, "What were your top priorities?" And not any one of those members said their priority was changing work sessions. Now, I'm not saying it wasn't in the back of their mind, but that was not an issue that was raised during the campaign. And I still say that this council is very open to people that want to be involved. Now, I look out here this evening. I've gotten a bunch of letters from people saying, "Change the work session." It's very clear that it's going to be on the meeting tonight. I don't see any of those people, except maybe a few that spoke. But none of them are here, and it's 6:00 o'clock in the evening, 7:00 o'clock in the evening, but no one's here. No one is here. I can't say why they aren't here, but the fact of the matter is they aren't here. And this is an opportunity for them to speak on any issue that's on this agenda. So, you know, when you talk about changing, sometimes I hear two meetings tonight, one meeting a night. Questions, what night do you pick? Now, I know what the Durham Committee did. I know what they did, but I also know that the meeting that they said they didn't want to change it to was the meeting night that they have their meetings, which is the first Thurs of each month, which is first. And, you know, we, at least I have, I know others have, have planned our calendars before we ran, before we took this office. We knew when the council meetings were, and we said we were going to be able to attend, and that's what we planned ourselves to do. But again, I don't, I'm not in favor of making the change, and I'm not in favor of making the change because I think it works well. And the proof of it is that we've been doing it, at least since I've been there, for almost 16 years, 15 years, and I'm still mayor. You've got other council people that have been doing it for less than that, but they're still there. And I mentioned at the work session, only one person that I know that's been on this council since I've been here that has not gotten reelected, but everybody else that's run for office, that chose to run, got elected. And I assume that the people were comfortable with the way their city was being operated at the times that they were having them and the meetings that were being held. So I don't see this outcry for changing the meetings. I see, I see the letters that have come in, but I don't see this overwhelming outcry. And I think a council person made another good point. Everybody doesn't work during the day. Other people work at night. So how are you being fair to them? But the point of the matter is, I think people have put more significance on work sessions as far as public input than is actually there. The real action takes place on Monday nights when this council takes action. There are exceptions to that rule, but there are far and few in between. The real work in terms of when actions are made are this evening. And again, this issue that you raised in the night is going to be decided tonight. It's not being decided at a work session. The budget's going to be decided at council meetings, not at work sessions. So I feel comfortable where I am. I think by and large that your own public must feel comfortable because, as I said, I haven't had the outcry. And I'm not disrespecting those people who have sent me the challenging letters about changing the meeting. I'm not disrespecting them. But that, to me, doesn't represent the totality of the voting citizens of the city in terms of how they want this council to conduct their business. Having said that, I'm through and relinquish the time to other members of the council and then hopefully take action on it.
I'm all, Mr. Mayor, my speech?
Yeah, anybody who wants to-
I got my hand raised. I'm sorry. I'm all over this city. At festivals, community events, churches, meetings, you name it, with youth, old, not so old, not one person mentioned the time that we'd meet until, until Robert Stephens came to my office. No one expressed any concerns about our meeting times until Mr. Stephens came to my office. And he did, he did say, just like you said, Ms. Faust, that would be a good campaign issue for you. Well, you said that we were running for mayor. That's what he was talking about. I'll take back, I'll take back. You just said that we were running. But anyway, I said, well, you know, when I make decisions, it's not because of a campaign. It's because of, I do what I think is the right thing to do. But I did say that if I had an issue, that one would be how we can stop our young black men from killing each other. That would be my issue. And I asked him, "What are you doing between hours of 2:00 and 7:00? Somebody needs to be out helping to mentor young people." On the first Thursday night, there is the Durham Committee meeting, and we should go there. Sometimes I go to my choir rehearsal, so I cannot. So I'm not, I'm not going to give up my work for God to satisfy our campaign desire. On the third Thursday night, I'm in an organization that mentors young people, so I'm not going to be in here while, while I can be out helping somebody. It's just that simple for me. I'm in organizations that help people. I am not going to give that up. I cannot afford to give up something that's going to help somebody, to sit in this building. It's just like the church structure. People go to church, and when they leave, they do absolutely nothing to help people. So many do. But I'm not gonna, I, I am committed to helping young people. That takes place on one Thursday night, and then I'm committed to my church, and I'm going to stay committed. And if the vote goes down that on any Thursday night I have to come here, I'll just ask for an excused absence through the end of my term because I'm not giving up my work with my church, nor am I giving up my work with the teams. Plus, we have, plus, we have two meetings during the day and two meetings at night. What else, what else can we do? Two meetings at night. Well, there are people who say they don't want us to move it. There are lots of people, because I'm around people all the time. So that's, that's my, that's my opinion, and I plan, as I said, let me repeat, I'm not giving up my work with my church, nor am I giving up my work with helping young people.
Moffett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank everybody that came tonight to talk on this. It's good to have people here, and I agree that no one should have to choose between their job and participation in the civic life of the city. And to change the current schedule will deny many people the opportunity to participate. I've said this before, and now I'm saying it again, each work session is the prep time for the following action meeting. The agendas are virtually the same, with the exceptions of when time is of the essence, like when we voted on the resolution supporting the LGBTQ community and calling for the repeal of HB2, and the other exceptions for public hearings, which are never, or virtually never discussed at the work session, but always held at the evening action meeting, these meetings tonight. In fact, two weeks from tonight, or maybe it's three weeks, but the next action meeting, there'll be a lot of public hearings. As you all know, Durham is full of people who work at night. Restaurant employees, even people who work at McDonald's and Wendy's, taxi drivers, custodians, teachers, emergency personnel, entertainment venue employees, nurses, doctors, security guards, retail employees at grocery stores, drug stores, gas stations, and more. There was a study out, the Washington Post Wonk Blog reports on a study out from the University of London and Perischool Economics on workers in America, and it says, "27% of American workers report working nights," which the study defines, that's 27%, defines rather strictly as any work performed, performed between 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. If the definition of night were expanded earlier into the evening, say 7:00 p.m., this number would be considerably higher. Now, I really appreciate Ms. Wagstaff addressing the, this issue, talking about unions. The North Carolina Association of Educators is possibly the strongest union in North Carolina, but I don't think anybody would suggest that teachers don't need to be involved in these meetings because they're well-represented. It's been suggested to me that for some reason, these people who work at night are not consequential enough to merit consideration. I hope that everyone here joins me in disagreeing with that. If the work session and the action meeting are both held at night, people who work during those hours, who are committed to childcare or elder care or anything else that keeps them out of coming out at night, are shut out of participating. As the meetings are currently scheduled, people who work at night can attend daytime work sessions, while people who work during the day can attend this meeting at night. I believe it's only fair to provide access to our meetings for as many people as possible. If residents of Durham can get to an evening meeting, they can attend on Monday nights. But changing the work session schedule creates a complete barrier to participation for anyone working during the evening, and I do not and cannot support it. Thank you.
Recognize Councilman Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate everyone's passionate and well-thought-out considerations on this issue. I did have one procedural matter before I talked about the proposal. Mr. Mayor, is it your intention to have, or invite some member of the council to make a motion to retain the current schedule at the end of our conversation, or would it be more appropriate for a member of the council to propose to make a change and then allow that motion to pass or fail?
We can do it either way. I entertain a motion, and whoever wants to make a motion, the Mayor Proton, in case she wanted to make a motion, but we can do it either way you want to.
Sure. You're sitting in the chair.
Well, why don't we go ahead and, you want to make your comments now?
I'd love, I'd love to. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm not going to belabor the points that I made 10 days ago at our work session. I do want to thank the folks that came out today to speak in support of broadening access to our work sessions, which are critically important meetings that we have, to receive information from staff and also to engage in critical conversations amongst ourselves about the issues that we face and that we will be voting on at the next, as it's called "action" meeting, which is a term I'd never heard before until we got into this conversation. I also, Mr. Mayor, appreciate your consideration to my, I guess you should call it a request, my request, that we take action on this proposal at one of our action meetings, rather than at the 1:00 o'clock meeting that everyone keeps telling me we don't actually make any decisions at. So I appreciate that, your deference to my request in that regard. I also really, I can't remember, actually, I can't. It was two years ago when we were dealing with some police and reform issues, but I can't remember the last time that the Durham Committee on the Affairs of Black People and the Durham People's Alliance came out so strongly on one issue and spoke with one voice about a need in this community. And so I appreciate El Centro sending one of their board members here tonight. Thank you for being here and adding that important voice to this conversation as well. And I just think it speaks to, and all respect to the Mayor Proton, I think it speaks to the broad support for opening access to our work sessions to people who work during the day. And I think, I don't really understand the basis upon which folks can say that nobody really wants to do this when everything we've heard from people is that they want us to do this. But obviously, we each have our own experiences in the community and talk to different people, and I respect that. But I'll just close with this, well, two things. I think, Mr. Mayor, you're absolutely right, that Durham does a great job at opening up all parts of our governing process to as many people as, as our current procedures will allow. And I think that's something our city should be proud of. Citizen participation is important in the city of Durham, and we've done a good job at expanding that where possible. I'm simply saying that this is one more way that we can make our work sessions more accessible to the vast majority of Durham citizens who work during the day. And I think that's important. The last thing I'll just say is this. If there's a proposal that causes Ms. Jackie Wagstaff to say something nice about me, there's got to be some truth to it, and I think we should consider it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Charlie, I mentioned the Durham Committee's piece about meetings. I was not at the Durham Committee meeting the night they made the decision. I came late because I had another meeting, but I can only say, based on the conversation I've had with the chairperson, he's here now, that they heard one side of why we should change the meetings. And I'm not saying if they heard another side, it would have been different, but I'm just saying what they heard was one side. And all the things that you've heard about why we should change the meetings is what they heard.
And, Mr. Mayor, obviously, tonight, from the citizens, we've heard one side, too, so.
Pretty much, pretty much, pretty much. Recognize Councilman Moffett.
I'm sorry, I'm going to jump in just for a second. Two things. Action meeting is something I picked up off the city clerk's website, which is why I referred to it that way. The second thing, I was just going to comment on the IR have a chance to attend or didn't know about.
Mr. Mayor, could I respond to that? For some time, Councilmember Martha, it's been the practice of the board of the People's Alliance to, when important issues arise between membership meetings, to take a poll of the membership of the board over a certain definite period of time. And if a majority of those board members determine that they can take a public position on a matter, they do. That's the same thing we did two years ago in the, in the police and reform issue, and the same thing that the board apparently agreed to do in this issue.
Recognize Councilman Shul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, when we have our work sessions, we have usually about, depends, could be anywhere from 30 to 50 city employees who come. And there are many more who are listening in City Hall, in case they're needed for questions, to come and attend if they feel that they might be needed for a question to be answered or to make a comment. And I don't want to make those people work at night. They work, we already have, we already have a room full on Monday nights of city employees who are here to work two Monday nights a month, and I don't want to add to that on Thursday nights. I feel, I feel like there are a lot of good points raised on both sides of this, but that is, that is what is most compelling to me. We want to make the city of Durham a great place to work. We want it to be a place where our employees can spend as much time as they can with their families and whatever it is that they want to do in the evenings for themselves. And so, I think there are good points on both sides of this, but to me, that's, that's very compelling. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Recognize, no, recognize Councilwoman Johnson. Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have already come out in support of this proposal and continue to support it, but I just wanted to thank everyone who has come tonight to speak, who has sent us emails and weighed in on this issue. I feel like it's been a really good opportunity to have a community conversation around something and to increase the amount of information that we're getting from the community and to really, it's been an opportunity for folks who don't always engage in the city process to engage with us. And so, I just want to say that I hope that everyone continues to engage on future issues as we move forward. There are a lot of important things that we're facing, and I think having all these voices at the table has really contributed to a more robust and interesting debate around this issue, and I hope that we can continue that. Thanks.
I can, I support Councilwoman Johnson on that. Recognize the mayor pro tem. Is that it? Okay.
Yeah, I was going to move the item as...
I'll second that motion.
I'm not moving to keep... To continue, the city council work session starts time at 1:00 on Thursday of the same week of each regular city council meeting.
It's been properly moved and seconded, discussion on the motion. Recognize Councilman Martha.
Yes, I'm fine with the motion as it stands. I was going to offer a motion, just for the language, to affirm our commitment to broad access by as many residents as possible, to continue on our work sessions at times when nighttime workers can attend in our action meetings when daytime workers can attend. So, that's why I support the motion that the mayor pro tem has made.
Further discussions on the motion. Here and now, I'm going to call a question. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote?
It passes 5 to 2 with Councilmember Johnson voting no and Councilmember Reese voting no.
Thank you. We move to item 14, which was pool, law enforcement, recognize Victor Peterson. Ms. Peterson? You have three minutes.
Three minutes?
Three minutes, three minutes. And it's 8:57, that means we can get out at 9:00.
Seriously, I was sort of wondering, it looks like we're speaking about, about $12,000 for this contract that Durham police officers did some work with Chapel Hill police officers? Is that what this is about? Well, let me just ask, and to let the new city folks know, tell me why we are able to bring about contracts with officers when the Durham Public Housing units no longer have police officers? And, Mr. Reese, somebody went on the property of Durham Public Housing Meduga Terrace Saturday and shot a young man in this community. And that is not the first time that has happened. This city and our government needs to put the police officers that used to work the Durham Public Housing, we need to find out what has happened with those federal funds and immediately put those officers back there at that facility and the other public housing facilities where we have taken the police officers out of those facilities. So, if you can find monies to do this, then we need to find the dollars, and we need to ask whoever is running the Durham Public Housing, the Public Housing, which is a federal program, which people in the, and when I went up there the other day, Ms. Waxstaff, you should see all the children that was outside playing. And you had a young African-American male laid down, stretched out, dead, laying there. And the children and the people and the citizens are seen and looking. Those units need policing. North Carolina Central University has a law enforcement department over there on that campus. I believe, I do not want to be wrong, I believe, I believe that the Public Housing Meduga Terrace and some of those other facilities have more people living on that property than North Carolina Central University with their students, students living in the dormitories. Now, if they can have security, tell me why the Durham Public Housing. And, Mr. Bonfield, I'm also going to ask you tonight to please get on the phone tomorrow and find out where's the mental health. Because some of us who live in these areas, we need some counseling. I live in walking distance of Meduga Terrace, and I need somebody to talk to about this situation, about all this killing and shooting going on in my community. And I do not want to have the funds and pay for, the city needs to pay for this, so that the citizens, so that we can get the kind of counseling, the kind of mental health counseling that we need to talk, to talk about all this killing and shooting going on in the black community. And we cannot blame this on the KKK. They ain't got nothing to do with this. And thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you can tell us about, if they're able to get, get contracts to do this kind of work, can we see what we can do to put some officers back over there at Meduga Terrace and the other public housing units, particularly these units where all this killing and shooting is going on?
Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
Are you going to say something, since you stood up? Identify yourself if you like.
We'll be glad to answer any questions the council has.
Sir?
We'll be glad to answer any questions council members have.
Okay, all right. Recognize Councilman Davis.
Thank you. I believe that the work that we do with other municipalities and other counties has to do with a inter-local arrangement we have when there are big events that go on where folks need our help, and we, in turn, might need their help for different kinds of things when there are big events going on.
Yes, sir, that's correct. But first, let me identify myself. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager. My name is Jesse Burwell. I'm a non sworn assistant chief for the Durham Police Department. And yes, Mr. Davis, you are correct. We've been providing law enforcement services to the town of Chapel Hill for years. Every year, we provide them law enforcement services at their annual Halloween celebration. And years ago, they used to have an event called Apple Chill that stopped now, but we used to also provide them law enforcement services at that event. And occasionally, when their men's basketball team makes the NCAA finals, we provide law enforcement services at that event. On April 4th, they were expecting over 25,000 people to descend on the town of Chapel Hill, and their current law enforcement staff couldn't handle it.
And just to clarify for the record, if I could, one, that was not impacting our daily deployment for that particular day. These were officers who were working, who otherwise would be off. So, this was secondary employment, and all the costs associated with that were not borne by Durham residents or taxpayers, they were paid for by the town of Chapel Hill or the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill.
That's absolutely correct. They were, they hired officers that would have been off that evening anyway.
And I guess my other point, along with the fact that these are off-duty police officers, that there's a reciprocation of that in case, I mean, Duke may have also, they have won national championships and other big events that could, we could benefit from the same kind of thing, and I would guess that we would make the same kind of arrangements with their off-duty police officers.
Typically, that doesn't happen, only because of the size of our department. Councilmember Davis, we do have, you know, mutual aid agreements with a lot of agencies that don't necessarily have, you know, reimbursements associated with them, but for special events, you know, every, every basketball game at Duke University and every football game at Duke University has a significant number of city police officers who work off-duty, who are compensated by the university, so it happens frequently.
Good.
But instead of invoking the mutual aid agreement, they go through our off-duty officer.
Good.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Open the vote? Did you open the vote? All right, okay. Close the vote.
It passes 7 to 0.
Are there any other items to come before the council? Recognize the mayor pro tem.
I was at Lakeview Alternative School today, and I just hope that the public will realize that there are a lot of students, there are young black men, who are in need of mentors. And please, please, don't forget these young men. They, some have been in trouble with the law, and this is an excellent opportunity to help change their direction. We're providing a clothing closet, a food pantry for them, and monetary gifts to supplement their needs. So, if you have money, send it there as well. This is not a paid announcement. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Any other items to come before the council? If not, council adjourn at 9:06 p.m. Thank you.